Hi, everybody. Welcome to Tri-Cities Community Television. My name is Patrick McCarthy. We're in our Fountainhead Studios, which is on Westwood in Port Coquitlam. And today, we have always give you a chance to learn about new candidates that are running, and in this case, in the city of Port Moody. So Richard Beatka is here today. So welcome, Richard.
Thank you.
Good to see you. And of course, as a new candidate, you know, you want to sort of, people have a chance to know you. Can you give us a sense of who you are and kind of why you're running? And that would be great.
Sure. I'm a Tri-Cities boy. I grew up in Coquitlam. And I went to UBC. I've got a Bachelor of Science degree in Biology. Majored in Marine Biology. I worked a little bit as a field biologist, did a bit in the agriculture industry, and ended up in the commercial seafood industry, where I worked my way up through the ranks to Vice President of Domestic and International Sales. And previous to that, or post that job, I was the National Account Manager for another USA head company. And I've had a lot of experience on senior management's teams, working with budgets, budgeting. I got other skills, you know, labor relations, marketing. I also did sensory analysis out of the University of Manitoba. So I think I got a good skill set that would contribute to being a councillor. I got interested in this about five years ago, when I got my property tax bill and it'd gone up 500%. So I've been in Port Moody for 30 years. So I was kind of surprised that it went up by that much. And you do the math, it wasn't all inflation. So I was curious, where did all this money go? Because in my neighborhood, it looked pretty much the same as it did in 1980. So that year was a by-election. So I went down, signed up. After I did that, I went, oh, man, what did I do? I wasn't ready for that. I don't know anything about politics. So it was a vertical learning curve. I tried that out and didn't make it. I got about 5% of the vote. I was self-funded. And the next year was the full election. So I thought, OK, cut my teeth, try it again, went into that. And again, I got 5% of the vote, and I was self-funded. But I learned a lot at that time. And there's a lot of committees, a lot of meetings you can go to. It was actually way too many. So I decided to focus on the finance committee meetings, because I thought, you know, anything that's going to drive the city's got to come from the finance side. So learn about what they do, where the money goes, and then you can make good or bad choices on what to do forward. So that really propelled me into it. And I learned a lot over those five years, met a lot of people at the City Hall. I volunteered with some community groups locally, and attended the meetings, and spoke at public input and that kind of stuff. So I think I've got a good sense now of how it works, who the people are there that you need to talk to. And I'm looking forward to getting a spot there this year and testing out, you know, my chops at council.
So let's, on the finance side, because obviously you have me intrigued by that. Because we've got two lines here. We've got the COVID finance period, and we've got, it sounds, the numbers you're talking about are pre-COVID, and in a sense, a different mayor at that point.
Oh, in terms of the...
Yeah, so the finance timeline. So what did you learn when you went through that sort of analysis process with the finance in Port Moody? And what do you want to sort of, from your discovery, pass on to the constituents?
Well, I think COVID was good for one thing only. It showed that Port Moody could run on like a life support budget. That's about 3%. So I think the following year, they asked for 7.2%. So when you're watching the finances, you say, OK, well, you can just cover your costs. You can't do anything. It's no fun stuff, nothing. But 3%, you can survive. So where does the other 4.2% go? That's the question. So you have to start digging in. And yes, there's a lot goes for, you know, the departments, fire, water, sewer, all that kind of stuff. But they also waste a lot of money. And you can add up numerous cases, you know, 35,000 here, 75,000 there, 200,000 there. And when you hit 480,000, that's 1% of the total city budget. That's redirected away from the core city services, fire, water, all that kind of stuff. So I learned you can actually save money and reduce pressure on taxation if you just control what you're spending, spend the money wisely, and focus on the core city businesses, or services, I should say. And, you know, everybody complains when their taxes go up by 1%. So you should strive to save that. And in some cases, if it compounded any particular year, it could have been 2% or 3% that was directed away from core services. And that money could went there, and again, you would have a more stable tax base. So that part was really interesting. And that's the challenge, I think, for most of the public offices at the municipal level is, can you get back to basics, live within your means, and control that, and still deliver the core services that the residents are used to?
Yeah, so on the finance side, though, I mean, in a city, really, outside of, you know, sort of bylaw infringement and sort of fines and stuff like that, or movies coming into town, and those are a very small percent. I mean, the majority of it comes from property tax percentage. So you see Port Moody is going through a serious growth. Like, it's almost like it's small, but it's very confined.
Yep.
And you've got all these developers chomping to get their properties on the front. So based on that core services principle, is growth of the city manageable or good? Or is it a conflict to that core principle? Or does it make... It seems to me, and it's just my ignorance, it's like, you have more people move in, so that in a sense, the services should be distributed among more people. But it doesn't seem always...
Doesn't work that way, no.
Doesn't work that way. So why is that?
Because in the municipal charter, the city's allowed to tax you for the services they deliver. So when you increase more people, the amount of services you need go up. So your cash flow increases, so you're taxing everybody, and you're spending more. So it's kind of neutral. It's just a wash. So when you create more, yes, you do get more tax cash flow revenue, that's true. And if it sticks to the city, which it doesn't, because it's supposed to be using that for services. And the other side of that coin is, when new people come in, and they're, say, they're in some of these developments, apartments, townhouses, that kind of thing, they don't have the luxury of someone who's a single-family homeowner to go out and relax in your backyard. So when they go out, they want to go out. And they need services when you go out. They need recreation, they need, you know, restaurants, other amenities that businesses will bring in. That drives up the cost to the city, because now you had one tennis court, now you need five. You have one pool, now they want an indoor pool. So all that, all of a sudden, you see an increase in your tax revenue when your services costs come up. So now you're net neutral again. So to get out of that spiral, or that, what do you call that, gerbil wheel, is you have to create other forms of revenue. So in Port Moody, the billboards is one example of that. Fees are another thing of that. And the density bonus from development is another thing like that. But you also have to realize that the density bonus money is a one-time thing. When the development is built, you get that ish shot of income. And so you have to, you know, be able to manage that properly for all the other expenses you have to pay. So that's not a steady stream for Port Moody. That's just cash infusions for every building.
But isn't that kind of like, I guess, from a political perspective, like, you know, people are always asking for another rink. They're always asking for another field, right? They're asking for even, you know, I think in this region, we're relatively, I don't think we underserve, if that makes sense, any social services. I mean, if you're Vancouver, you're obviously, a big part of your budget is social support. And we're getting those challenges coming to this region. So what would you cut? Or what should we be, what should we be going back to, then, to get ourselves into a more, I guess, palatable tax rate?
Well, I think the first thing is you have to cut off the fat. If you're wasting 1% of your budget on peripheral stuff, that automatically boosts your revenues up. So you have to work on that first. Then you have to make the city more efficient. You know, there's a lot of examples where, you know, they could have done something for $1, and it cost them $5. So those things, I think, are real tangible things that you can do without actually having to physically cut something. You know, if you get to the point where you need to cut that, then you have to look at all the, normally the soft things get cut first. But Port Moody, I would say, they do 80% of the stuff right. 20% needs to be improved. It's not, we're not in any kind of crisis or anything like that. But you really have to be aware of that. And as you can turn the city like an elephant, you know, elephants don't move very fast. You've got to push it over in this direction, so a lot of that money sticks back to the core. And then you can use that to pay down your debt. You can do some of those other soft services you're talking about for homeless people, or affordable housing, all that other kind of stuff, where you have more money available. Right now, Port Moody is going paycheck to paycheck. They don't have extra money for that stuff.
So you hit the word affordable. So I mean, the finance side, is there anything else you want to add on the finance that we may have missed in your research that you want to pass on?
No, I think, I think we just want to highlight that you have to start looking for revenue outside of taxation. Because that's the only way that you actually can move forward and do some stuff that you want to do.
So if you're comfortable with that, just, you know, we look at affordability.
Yep.
And I'll pose this, when you talk about other revenue streams outside of advertisement and outside of...
Well, advertisements is another form of revenue stream that's not based on taxation. So that would be in the basket.
Yeah, but you can, it's like anything, though. You can, after a while, you've got a city full of billboards. So I mean, there's...
Well, you can advertise on the garbage trucks. You can, your vendors, you can approach your vendors, say, look, we're running a recycling business here. Why aren't you supporting us and do advertising on those trucks?
Yeah.
Pays for the fuel and everything else. So there's things like that you can do, too.
Yeah, so I guess take your sales and your marketing head and just try to figure out where to stick a label. We've got GM Place, why don't we have GM Garbage? So was that a joke? I don't know.
No, that's the dumpster fire line.
Dumpster fire. So let's talk about affordable housing. Because one of the things I think that, and this may be a question that, just interested in your thoughts on that, is you talk about new revenue streams. And typically, when you see affordable housing, one of the assets that a city has is land. In many cases, it could be vacant. And so the whole process of having this vacant land could be turned into, when you look at that, your property taxes, 75% of it is your land value. Your physical wood and nails is pretty small. So the concept of the city becoming part of, I guess, a landlord, you know, as a revenue stream, how do you, sort of, when people talk about that as a possible solution for affordable housing, how do you approach that?
Well, that's a good question, because Port Moody, as you already highlighted, we're like a horseshoe. We're jammed in the corner. We have traffic problems, because everybody wants to drive through Port Moody to get where they're going. And lastly, Port Moody's land poor. We don't have a whole lot of developed land. I think there's four projects coming through. And we have the old fire hall site, and they're thinking about relocating the works yard. That piece of property is the most expensive property that Port Moody has. So I think you really have to think hard what you want to do there. But if you go back to affordability, I think the discussion, you have to recognize that it starts from your personal income. So you can't paint the affordability brush with everybody. So someone at the lower rung of the economic ladder has a different definition of affordability, someone in the middle, or someone at the top. So if you want to increase affordability, I think you need to put processes in there, like reduce spending that relieves taxation, create more revenue that relieves taxation, so now you have a little bit more income in your pocket. Then you have to create more housing. And of that housing you create, you need more forms of that housing. Studio, one, two, three bedrooms, apartments, townhomes, single-family homes, whatever it be. Now, as an individual with a little bit more income, there may be some options for you to purchase something that now is more affordable. That's all at the market level. Then you can go back and look at these developments that are coming in. Coronation Park is huge. Moody Center's huge. Flavell Oceanfront is huge. Westport is also huge. And now you're doing the trade-off with the developers over density for those other soft amenities, like affordable housing, below-market rentals, all that kind of stuff. That is where your gamesmanship comes in, so that the developer can walk away with $2 in his pocket, and you come away with affordable housing, seniors' housing, all that kind of stuff. And over those 5,000, I think, people they're talking about in those four projects, I'm sure you can get a good percentage of affordability and low-market rentals in there. I think that's the way Port Moody has to go. If you had lots of land, then I think you could go and partner up with BC Housing and some other people, and put in a nice project in there. But I'm concerned about that whole section for the rec center all the way down to Rocky Point Park. If another 20,000 people come in, that's going to, they're going to want to flood that area. So putting something in the fire hall and the works yard site without fully knowing what you're going to need prematurely, I think you need to sit on that and wait. That is a nice piece of property, and yes, you can do a lot of stuff with that. So you could lease it for 100 years if you wanted to, and go that route, put in seniors' housing, put in, you know, other sort of medical services, that kind of stuff. But I think the community needs to make that choice, and go through the official community plan process, and let them decide what they want to see for that whole center, which is kind of like the key core of Port Moody.
Yeah. So but I guess the hard part of that question was the city becoming more like a landlord. I mean, in a sense, you're talking a broker that's saying, we need more, you know, a mix in this building that basically is affordable, right? Whether that means, and that means different things...
I don't know if you need to own it to achieve the end game.
OK.
Right? I don't think you need to own it. And even if you did own it, the city doesn't have the skills to manage that kind of a facility. Anyway, you'd have to subcontract to BC Housing or somebody else. Like, I think there's one that, one facility, Woodland Park, I think they partnered with BC Housing, and they're working on affordable rentals in there. And the city's, you know, not involved with that at all, other than the land was there.
Yeah. I guess for me, you know, you keep hearing the word free market, you know, someone is renting them and making a business out of it. And, you know, you're obviously a businessman yourself. But it just seems like you could find somebody who could manage it well and probably, you know, take that profit from it. But it seems like we're, politicians are averse to that being a bad, you know, it's like kind of like a fast ferry, you know? You want to move that along real quick?
I'm not sure where you're going with that.
Just, well, just using as analogy, if I have four acres of land, or I have a bunch of land, and I basically take the land and sell the land, and the developer comes along and builds this great place...
And we sell it, you got one-shot cash division.
One-shot, you're done, right? And then all of a sudden, you realize that that 17 million with so many suites becomes, you know, maybe 200 million in assets, and you can sell it, and you could probably make $8 to $10 million a year in rentals, right? That itself, you could hire a property management company that could literally manage that and run it, and say, oh, here's your profits, you know, instead of it going to this developer.
You're talking about market rentals now, right?
Even subsidized. Because I think market rental, like, as you know, is the market. So if people with higher incomes come in, or higher-value jobs, then the people who don't have those jobs are really moving somewhere else. I mean, you, so this is kind of the...
Well, that's the same model as the developers propose. We'll build a 30-story building, the ones at the top are full price, and then they subsidize the ones at the bottom. And then your model is, well, the city just does that.
Or the city should own it, I guess. I guess it just seems, I guess, for me, you know, I'm looking at, when you look at other models, I'm not saying I have the answer, it's just you're looking, it's like in the English system, where they used to have council houses, that was run by the council, right? And they moved away from that. And they're probably thinking, oh, we've got to get back into that again. So, you know, as politicians are not, you know, finance economic people, they make decisions that are four-years-based. I just don't know if we're really looking at this whole affordability thing and saying, this is the strategy that gets us out of this hole. It's like we've come into a bunch of different sticks. So I'm just curious, because you, you know, you talked about this new revenue stream.
I'm not opposed to any other form of revenue stream. I was just sort of soundboarding of what the city was saying. They didn't want to get involved into that. But I'm not opposed to that. If you can do, you know, a P&amp;L on that, to see what kind of revenue you can generate, offset your costs, why wouldn't you?
Yeah.
I think those are options that all should be looked at.
Yeah, so I agree. I appreciate that. I was giving you the long answer to your question, so I apologize. So one of the things that, you know, we talked about here is the, kind of, this environmental side of Port Moody. I mean, it's, it's kind of a city across from, you know, another two cities, right? It's, in a sense of it, the environment is huge there. So it's this kind of contrast between protecting the environment and making it beautiful to kayak, and at the same time, having someplace to live. So what is your position on that?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say, Port Moody is the only place that you can go and walk up to a fish hatchery and watch a fish swim up and go into the hatchery there. That is the most unique thing, I think, in BC. You can't do that anywhere else. So there's a lot of great things like that for Port Moody. And I think everybody that lives there understands that. And one of my things was, I was opposed to the changes to the environmental sensitive areas. And this is where the plan now exceeds, I think, what it was initially set out to do. So they've increased the buffer from the forest from, I think it was 3 meters, now to 15 meters. And from, there's a new thing, though that's new, and from the high tide mark, 30 meters. So now it's flowed into private property. And that's caused a bit of alarm, because now you're required to go through the city process to change your own property. There's fees, and you have to be reviewed, might be an environmental assessment, you could be declined or approved. And when you look at those properties, there's nobody violating any sort of environmental act. They don't violate the Fisheries Act, and they comply to the Riparian, I'm not saying it, but it's called the Riparian Act.
Or ZONE, I guess.
Yeah, there's a name for it. I can't remember exactly what it is. But, so that's all been functioning since the 2000s. So for 20 years, it's been fine. And I think those types of policies that are in place have really done service Port Moody well. There's not a lot of, I wouldn't say any egregious environmental catastrophes in Port Moody. I think it's nice, and you see that. There's a lot of parks, a lot of green space. And any new development has to conform, excuse me, to the existing ESA guidelines, right? It's only the proposed changes that I'm in opposition with. It's got nothing to do with the environment, it's just all about your property rights, what you can and can't do there.
Yeah. But at the same time, I think, you know, the city council in Port, you know, predominantly, you would say, as a stereotype, that in Port Moody, there's a very strong environmental influence, right?
Yeah.
So outside of property rights, it's a sense of, you know, we've got the Chevron refinery up the hill. We've got the, the new pipeline is, you know, being twinned and is making its way silently through our towns. And so when you're on council, I think there's a lot of things that people use, the environment draws their decision-making process. So is, where do you see yourself in those kind of debates?
Well, I think there's a common sense approach to everything, right? You can't turn this off and in favor of that. You have to have some common ground. There is an economy that runs in BC, you know, it's a resource-based economy. So I think a lot of those things are still going to transpire. You just have to transition from one to the other in a reasonable fashion. You know, I think for Port Moody, the jewel and the gem is getting into hydrogen processing. We've got the hydrothermal plant that's mothballed there, that has a huge natural gas line. And we could set up, partner up with some companies in Alberta, bring them out, set up a hydrogen plant there, and do carbon fixing. That'd be a whole new industry. That would go right in that heavy industry place and bring in new revenue. And that's sort of state-of-the-art technology, and hydrogen, you can have green hydrogen produced. That would be fantastic for Port Moody. We should be catering to those types of people and attracting them, because we have the raw materials for those guys to go to work.
So, you know, last, you know, last election, they were talking about resilient cities. And I had no idea what they were talking about.
I don't know either.
Yeah. But since then, you know, and I realize now, it's like the floods, the fires, you know, all these things that are happening to us. So, you know, what is your position on what the city of Port Moody needs to do to kind of be more resilient against this, you know, climate change that's coming?
I think that's a great question, because I think you have to look at, where does the provincial responsibility end and the city responsibility start? And I think in the flooding, I think there was a lot of this going on. You know, who was supposed to maintain the dike? Who didn't do the dike? And the end result was disaster. So I think when you're getting, walking the line between provincial and municipal, there's a fine line there. And I know, we live up on a canopy, green canopy in Port Moody that could be ripe for forest fire. I think forest fires are probably more prevalent than something like a flood. And how are we going to manage that? I don't know. I think you have to, again, go to the team that you have there, fire department, or talk to the province, how they remediate, that kind of thing, and get some ideas. That's a little bit out of my lane. I'm not exactly sure what to do there. But I don't think we should stick our head in the sand. I think we should have some action plans and put those in place, so we know at least what to do if something that arises with a flood or a fire.
And one of the things you talked about, the third pillar is this campaign financing concept. And, you know, in your entry, you talked about, you know, you've run a couple times, and you're self-funded.
Yep.
So what's your view on the sense of, you know, to help you there, in the sense of the influence of developers we just talked about? And sort of this, you need 6,500 votes, or there's a magic number to get that sixth spot, right? It changes a lot. But not much. And when your voter rate is really low...
Yep.
What is your thought, like, you're seeing this kind of questioning how people are raising their money, even though we have the rules in place? And the barrier to entry for people who maybe can't afford, you know, 10 grand?
Oh, yeah. It's real. You know, I don't think you can run a successful campaign in Port Moody for under $8,000. You know, and that's, if you're someone who has really passion about Port Moody, but you don't have funding, it makes it hard for you to manipulate in that arena. And I tried it twice, you know? It's not easy. You have to start it two years ahead if you want to knock in the right door. But I think there's two sides to that story. One, there's a legal amount that anybody, any person can contribute. So as long as you're in accordance with the law, you can accept that donation. Then when you start to fraction it off, developers, special interest groups, unions, and it goes on and on and on, then which one do you pick is you want to demonize? So it's really hard to say, is it the developer one? Or is it the, say you have a website, and you've got 3,000 people follow your website, and it's, say you're, I want more dog parks for Port Moody, and they all give you $10. And you end up with $30,000. But if a developer walks up and gives you 1,200, you're a bad guy, because you got 1,200, but you got 30,000 from the people who want the new dog park. How do you weigh who is unduly influenced by what? And I think if you don't have a strong enough moral character to take a 1,250 donation from anybody legally, you shouldn't be running for city council. I don't think you should be swayed by that. You should thank them for their donation, and your platform is what you're going to deliver. You're not going to go there tomorrow and say, OK, dog people, you get, you know, Rocky Point Park is your new dog park. I'm just saying that facetiously.
Right.
But I think that's the problem, is what is really going on there? And what is the root cause of that statement? I don't know. Some people get a lot of money and endorsed by unions. I get zero. You know, so I don't know. I think it's, I think it's a political topic, and it's really good, talk around the coffee table and figure out who does what. But I think a level playing field was set up, that you get your legal limit. I think that's all you can really go by.
Yeah. I guess, I guess, for, when you talk about democracy and inclusivity of democracy, you don't want everybody running, of course. But at the same time, it does seem to be that, like you say, it's hard to get in, and once you're in, it's hard to get them out.
Yeah.
And so there is an element of money helps, right? It does raise your profile, so...
Well, it's totally true, you know? If you want to do the mail-out, the group mail at Port Moody, it's $4,000, right? And I didn't do that the first two years, and I can definitely say it reflected on my performance, because you, you don't reach the apartments and the townhouses, the things that you just can't get in, right? It's hard to do that. So I think it's a real issue, but I think it's a red herring.